Twenty-two. I'll call the meeting to order at six thirteen P M. And the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna do roll call. And the first board member you're gonna call on roll call is our newest board member Gary Wood. Gary, are you here?
I'm present.
Would you like to address the board and give them a little information about yourself? Oh, do we have a camera? How do we turn the camera on?
I have to stop.
Oh.
I mean, sit here, stop. I mean, stop showing your screen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Gary Wood. Excuse me. I've been the president of the City of San Diego for twenty-two years. And prior to joining the Personnel Board, I had served on two of the commissions. E-TAC, which is Environmental Transportation Advisory Commission, twice, once as vice chair. And before that, I was on the Housing and redevelopment commission, two years, one year as chairman. Since I retired, my work background, for three years, I was vice president of operations for the division of Phillips Lighting. And our manufacturing department in Long Beach was utilized, so I have a lot of dealings with the arbitration and negotiations. And it's helped me in the past, and I'm glad to join this commission. It's my pleasure to join this board.
Thank you so much. I'll continue with the roll call. Gabriela Hernandez Castillo. Not present. Bernice Baeenas.
Present.
Nellie Legaski is not present. Denise Navarro, not present. Michelle Colito.
Present. Also, welcome, Gary.
Angie Rivera. Did you see that email? Angie Rivera.
Present.
Can you email? Can you email Gabby the link? Also present is Jenna Burns, attorney for the Personnel Board, myself, Lori Schneider, recording secretary. Also present, some staff members, we have Lily Pham, James Murray, and Kelly Lee. We also have Gabby is trying to log in right now, so she'll be coming in shortly. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. She's in the waiting rooms. Do we have any public comments? And we don't have anybody present, so there's no public comments. And then Gabriela Hernandez Castillo is present now.
Yes, I'm here.
Great, thank you. So that's the end of the consent calendar items. Oh, wait, moving on to the consent calendar items, the first thing up we have is excused absences. We recommend we excuse absent board members. We go board member by board member who's not present. First of all, we have Nellie Legaski. Do I have a motion to excuse her absence?
I motioned to excuse her absence.
That was Bernice Baeenas. Do I have a second?
I wonder whether we want a second.
And we will vote. Gabriela Hernandez Castillo.
Yes.
Bernice Baeenas.
Yes.
Michelle Colito.
Did she send out like an email or anything?
She did. She sent an email out to the board a couple of few hours ago saying that she had a family emergency.
Oh, please, it's okay. Okay, yeah.
Angie Rivera.
Yes.
And Gary Wood.
Yes.
The motion carries. The other board member that is absent is Denise Navarro. Do I have a motion to excuse the absence for Denise Navarro?
Wonder what I make a motion to excuse her absence.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
And if there's any discussion, then no discussion, then we'll go ahead and vote. Gabriela Hernandez Castillo.
Yes.
Wait, I want to, can I ask a question?
Yes, please, discussion.
For discussion. Is it possible if, since like, there might be a lot of emails or like emails that go like only to you, if we state if the person notified us or not? Or like you guys state it when you're asking to use their absence?
No problem, no problem. I personally have not received anything. Lily, have you received anything from Denise? Yeah, I mean, it's very unusual for her not to state anything, but I have not. Um, let me open up.
Have you guys been in contact with her since last week? Or since the last meeting when she missed it?
I have not been in communication with her since last week.
Or like since the last meeting, sorry.
Yes.
You have been in contact with her since last meeting? Like, I'm trying to see, is she aware that we're doing this absent thing? Because I wouldn't want to say unexcused if she hasn't been notified yet that we were going to start doing this.
Oh, I have not, no, we have not been in communication with her to let her know that we're doing attendance. We have not previously been excusing absences, so she is not aware.
Okay. Has there been an attempt to contact her?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Have you guys already attempted to contact her and notify her?
I have not.
Thank you.
I I believe she was present at the last meeting and we did decide, the board decided to do the excused absences. And if my memory serves, which it might not, I believe she said she wasn't available for this meeting at the last meeting. But I, that's testing my memory and I'm not sure about that.
Is there any further just question?
I know we filled out that calendar thing that she put unavailable and we still scheduled this meeting.
I can check the calendar.
Now it makes me like worried if she's okay. If like, we haven't really contacted her. Don't know where she's at and she hasn't spoken with us or anything.
She, when we filled out the calendar back in November, she did say that she was available. And she, I checked it since then.
Can we try to reach out to her now? Maybe she just forgot.
Or Lily? We're gonna call, we're gonna try calling her right now.
Okay, thank you.
She's gonna go ahead and leave a voicemail.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? So then we will vote. Gabriela Hernandez Castillo, I'm gonna call for it again because we had some discussions and she voted.
That's fine, yes.
Bernice Baeenas.
Yes.
Michelle Colito.
Yeah.
Angie Rivera.
Yes.
Gary Wood.
Yes.
The motion carries. The absence of Denise Navarro has been excused. This is the end of the consent calendar, moving on to the business calendar. Michelle, since the chair is absent, would you like to take over the business calendar discussion of the personnel board proposed rules? Or would you like me to go ahead and, I'll share my screen? Or however you want me to do it, like we did last time? Or do you want to share your screen or how do you want to do it?
Um, I think I liked it last time when you ran it, so I can like open it like now, we will talk about the comments on the roles and procedures of the personnel board.
Let me open that up. Okay. Oh, can you see my stack? Can you see everything? Oh, shoot, okay. It doesn't. Different way. There it is. Okay. So we stopped the reading at right above two point five point three. So if you open up to the document to page seventeen, and we'll begin the reading again at two point five point three. Is there anybody who'd like to read or I can read? At the pre-hearing, both sides shall exchange witness lists and exhibit lists concerning the evidence and witnesses that each intends to offer at the hearing on the appeal, with the exception of impeachment witnesses or supplemental witnesses and exhibits identified within five days of the pre-hearing. All exhibits shall be pre-marked with the appointing authority numbering its exhibits sequentially, beginning with zero zero one, ranging up to one hundred. The employee shall number its exhibits sequentially, beginning with three hundred and range through four hundred. If more numbers are needed, the board secretary will accommodate. The board secretary will instruct the parties at the pre-hearing when copies of its pre-marked exhibits are to be delivered to the secretary and in what quantity. Failure to exchange witness and exhibit lists at the pre-hearing may result in a party being precluded from calling witnesses and offering exhibits not previously identified. Is there any discussion on this section?
Hello?
Yes.
Hello? Um, I wanted to make a recommendation for some kind of like a packet that would be provided to each board member with what was provided in the Skelly hearing. Basically, what evidence the employee has already been aware of per their rights and what is new evidence?
So right now, the board members are provided with a notice of adverse action. And if the and if the employee wishes to provide their case, their statement. So that's all that's currently in the packet given to the board.
Right. So per the federal labor laws, we do have the right to be investigating each employer when we open a labor commissioner board appeal hearing. But it would be easier if they just provided it, like, instead of us having to do all of that discovery. But it does seem like it might, we might be leading towards that direction if we still have like a lack of clarity from what evidence meets the government requirements and what is being thrown in at the end.
So the question I would have for Jenna, this is, that's what's provided at the Skelly hearing is typically, or has been provided as evidence. So if they were to provide that as a packet, I mean, do you see that as any kind of conflict or what do you advise?
So I guess my question is, and I think I'm seeing two different issues here. Is that so we have the Skelly packet. I think Michelle might just be interested in knowing clearly what was provided in the Skelly packet as opposed to kind of getting mixed up in with other evidence? Is that, is that your concern?
Yeah. So I am concerned with like after the fact of, I guess, the direction of the case being convoluted based on what might sound good in present day versus what the actual reason for being terminated, fired, demoted, or whatever the appeal case is. So I would want to have like something that really shows a screenshot into the actual time period of when the adverse action occurred versus an after-the-fact compiled report, which could have new evidence in it. And I would also recommend that each employer have to submit some kind of, we know they have a document control system, but they have to actually submit a packet to their H R and that becomes finalized. And that's the packet that we get to see. And considering that employers are able to open an investigation on their employees, if they're not able to put that together, then that would show a sign of an insufficient investigation in the first place. So they kind of like, they could have left their investigation open instead of like jumping to an action if that would be a potential reason not to do so.
So my other comment would be, as board members, you typically aren't supposed to see the evidence beforehand. And that's why the current rules are limited to, you know, what Lori was explaining, the notice adverse action, and then if the employee wishes to submit a statement. But I do think to your comment.
I understand that that's the, that's the purpose of how we do things, how we conduct it. But it's not supposed to be some like secret mystery trial. Like, there are federal labor laws that provide that it is within our purview to investigate the employer, including their documentation about each person that is opening an appeal case.
I mean, without looking at the federal labor laws, I wouldn't, I mean, which I'm happy to review for you and take a look at what you're looking at. I'm not sure what you're referencing, but those, yeah, my comments before.
The document that I submitted.
The, the comments that you submitted, can you pull those up? Hold on.
So it would be on page seven. It's the one under Labor Code, Labor Division Two, Employment Regulation and Supervision, Part Four, Employees, Chapter Four, Relocation, Termination, and Mass Layoff, under the federal code. And then it states, in any investigation or proceeding under this chapter, the labor commissioner has, in addition to all other powers granted by law, the authority to examine the books and records of an employer. And since we're the labor commissioners,
so that's actually.
That would be within our purview.
That's actually referring, this is the California Labor Code. And that's actually referring to the labor commission. This is actually referring.
Federal, and in another role, it says that this chapter applies to local municipals, municipalities as well. I can send it in whole. But I mean, at the end of the day, the only thing that I am, and I can't like speak directly to it because we're doing everything in closed session, even though, like for the sake of the employee, even though their name is posted all over the agenda. But the reason why I'm stating that is I have my own concerns of whether or not evidence is being properly submitted. And I think that that's something that needs to be immediately addressed.
Are you guys seeing what I, oh, I'm sorry, you're not seeing what's on my screen. So this is what Michelle is referring to in this on the notes that she sent to me. The only question I have is does this portion of the labor code address what the employer should be doing or address what the personnel board should be doing?
It says labor commissioner. So we're technically a commissioner board, which means that we're separate. It's kind of like a weird usage of vocabulary, but like, we are the labor commissioners. But we are appointed as commissioners. So that would make us the labor commissioners in this local section.
So Michelle, I'm not.
So therefore, we do federally.
This is, again, this is the California Labor Code and I can, I'm happy to send you.
No, it's the federal.
It's not. But regardless.
It states within the code that it applies to local law. I can send it.
No, I mean, I, I just looked it up and that's fine. And I.
Really important that we, that we follow this because this could lead, you know, our city into bankruptcy of being sued multiple times over. This is something that we should take very seriously. It's a labor law. We don't want to have some kind of like cases opened on us. So I would suggest that the rules and procedures that we're working on now match the federal code.
We can certainly, the only problem I, I foresee in something like this is that the attorneys, you know, are building cases. I don't know if we require them to provide certain information. Are we taking away their right to a case? I'm not, you know, and we can.
How are they building cases if the adverse action has already occurred? Isn't that unfair to the employee that they're still building a case after they've already taken action?
Both sides are building their own case. I mean, both sides are presenting.
Well, that's fine, but we're, we're looking at the federal law and we're taking into consideration hers also the Skelly rules of what was already provided to the employee prior to adverse action. It's like stated multiple times over in the rules and regulations of the municipal code, but then, like, why isn't it being followed? I think it's just a huge potential risk, like fiscal risk, also just like time risk of opening pieces back up.
Okay, can you send me the link and then I can add that into the notes? So we can add this into the notes and we can certainly vote on this as the board. And of course, when this goes through legal review, we'll have them take a look at that as well.
Okay. Also, I think for the legal review, that perhaps we need to get a consultant in that understands federal law to ensure that we're not missing anything that could open us to being any of our cases escalated to the next level of court. By the way, to mitigate risk.
So I'm sorry, what would you like to see? The legal, I'm sorry, can you say that again, what, how you would like to, the legal review to be changed?
Well, it sounds like it's now being stated that we're just gonna put a note and see how legal, the legal team takes it. And we've already said that they're gonna argue that no people are still building their cases, even though the adverse action has already taken place. So therefore, I would like someone with a broader knowledge and less bias to be able to help and assist legal teams.
Oh, we have Jenna is our legal.
Right.
And then we have the city, the city attorney who will review this as well.
But the way that they currently exist already doesn't match federal requirements. So it would be important for us to not leave anything missing by not having someone that is a subject matter expert on the federal law, just in case. Because we don't want our cases to be reopened or like, you know, a bigger, I don't know, situation for us that leaves us financially at risk as a city.
I will just reiterate that the, the the code sections that you cited, those are California case law. And if you look at the fourteen hundred, that actually has to do with.
The code sections that you cited, those are California case law. And if you look at the fourteen hundred, that actually has to do with relocations, termination and mass layoffs. And the reference to the labor commissioner is the California Labor Commissioner of the Department of Industrial Relations. This is not federal law. Um, in general, the federal law, we wouldn't. Look to it. If anything, there might be some state, there might be state regulations. Um, but yeah, just, just throwing that out there.
I couldn't often it.
So Jenna, do you see any, aside from codes and laws, do you see the um. Any problem with requiring? Uh, this, this city's representation to provide. Everything that was provided in the Skelly hearing as a packet instead of when they present their evidence? Well, I think it still can be presented when they present their evidence, but I, I, I understand Michelle's point that it would be nice to see. A Skelly.
Yeah, like it doesn't necessarily have to be, I would like it as a pre-packet. But if it's going to be like mixed in with evidence, it should be clearly stated. What was there and what is being added after the fact of the adverse action in the hearing? That we legally are not supposed to be taking into consideration when we make our decisions and we take our considerations and submit them.
So like advising the attorney or the, the representative for the city. To make it very clear what was provided, what wasn't provided in the Skelly hearing. So that's what you're requesting that we. Tell the city's representative to provide exactly what was. Given to the employee during the Skelly hearing.
Yes. And I, I mean, if we wanted to be really proactive, do you also go back in history? It doesn't have to be any of the board members today, but just to make sure. Like for our own due diligence that we, that as a city, nothing has been decided based on something that doesn't meet those. Laws and requirements. So everything conforms per regulation.
Okay. And then if you could send me the link, then you know, we can insert that there. I, I, I think, I don't know that we necessarily, I don't know that we necessarily, well, I mean, it'd be part of. Uh, any other discussion on this, on this item? Or anything else in this two point five point three exchange of witness and exhibit list? Okay, we'll move on to two point five point four.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I, I, I was muted.
Okay, go ahead.
So I know part of the discussion that we had before about this section is that we have these um, guidelines as far as. How soon they have to submit this information, five days, but it's not adhered to. Um, so I'm not sure why we have. These standards when we don't really follow them.
I think you're.
I think so. I think the previous conversation goes hand in hand with what you're saying, and I agree. Of like that if that already is like last minute evidence, it's also not meeting the employee's rights. For Skelly.
I can see if it's a standard that we want to uphold, like we, this would be like the best practice. But we're not seeing it consistently followed.
I believe that our last meeting.
I think for now. I think for now, or this was my mindset without speaking to something in closed session too much. Um, was that just because it is admitted as evidence? Doesn't mean that it necessarily looks good for the person submitting it. It could actually be used as negative evidence. That they are not meeting their employee requirements to meet. These Skelly or like due diligence of like providing. Um, a, all the paperwork upfront before taking adverse actions. Like if they're submitting evidence after the fact and it's a strong. Piece of evidence against the employees, but they're not providing it until during the case. That should actually show that the employer is not meeting their requirements. To provide the employee with all the evidence.
Do you have a recommendation for a change that you'd like to see?
Um, I think for now, because. It. You know, as Gabby said, like it's not being adhered to, but we currently will just utilize, like we'll, we'll just look at it and see. Or maybe we could even get them to, to provide what was new and what isn't. Um, in general, like for any cases that are currently going on. And any that we're about to take in.
So you're requesting that they provide us with what? Was that they identify what was given at the pre-hearing and what was brought to. Like after the pre-hearing, they identify which ones? Is that my hearing that correctly?
Yeah. Yeah, that would be amazing.
Yeah, I think that would also be helpful.
Not pre-hearing, but per Skelly. So like at the Skelly hearing. Because we know that they went through already a hearing. Then if that's the case, plus the adverse action has already taken place, then there should, at our, at our level or our state, like in the timeline. We should not be seeing anything new that both sides haven't already seen. So that should be like clearly marked. This is brand new evidence. And then in that case, we could even consider as like this employer is like doing something, but it's not. For the law.
So Gabby is.
They're complying.
At what you're stating, or are you stating that what, so get, yeah, I, I think perhaps Michelle and Gabby were talking about two different things. Gabby. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you're stating if something is brought up after the pre-hearing, you want that identified?
So I, I'm talking both in lines with what Michelle is saying. And also, so if distinguishing between like what was submitted. At the pre-hearing and then what is submitted after that? And then what is submitted day of, because I know that in one of the hearings, it was really confusing because it was last minute submission. And it was clear, like what was accepted, what was not accepted? What are we talking about? What are we not supposed to be talking about? It was just confusing. So that way we can distinguish like what, like, yeah, I think what Michelle said, like distinguishing between. Like when things were submitted.
Okay. I have noted both. Is there some description of how you would like to see that written?
I mean, I would like a, a packet. That just includes everything that they have um, already provided to the employee. But I mean, if they're not going to do that, if they come up with a million reasons why that's. Logical or whatever, then maybe we could have someone like put a stamp or a sticker or like a separate divider of like. We could just separate it. I don't know. However, as long as it's like clear what is new and what is. Already meeting the employee rights.
Okay.
I don't know if there's a way to like state something like that, like it must be clearly identified. Like something that's not so specific within our rules and procedures that we like. Get locked into doing a certain approach, which is ends up being like. I guess kind of like too tedious or like there's a more simple way to do it. So if there, if. I guess you guys could think of a way that we could just say like, it must be identified. What has been provided like as an add-on to the sentence about the Skelly hearing? Then I think that would probably be like the easiest way. Like the safest way. To request that. So like, we could maybe say like. Uh, example, a packet, but like that it's not a requirement. As long as we know what was given and what isn't, like that's I guess the main point.
We could put a sentence in right before all exhibits stating. If materials. Are provided after. The Skelly hearing. Or after.
Or like, yeah, if new materials that have not been. Looked at at the Skelly hearing.
Pre-hearing.
Submitted.
These.
It should be clearly annotated on the evidence or something like that.
Be clearly marked.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or suggestions for this section?
Well, I think perhaps. Um, clarifying where it says exhibits um. Like must be submitted within five days. It could, it also indicates it's like highly recommended there be submitted within five days. Because they're, because they're still allowed. It's not like this is a cutoff.
Yeah, I agree.
It says shall. So at the pre-hearing, both sides shall, which means they must, or it's not accepted. However. Failure, here we have this at the bottom, and we discussed this in the last meeting. Failure to exchange witness and exhibit list at the pre-hearing may. May result in a party for pre-cluded. So this is trying to be really strong, but still leaving in out that you may, as a board, you may. Um, allow a witness or an exhibit not previously identified to be um. To be entered into evidence.
But if we start looking back at the hearings, I mean, what percentage of these cases actually have all their stuff submitted at the pre-conference hearing? So yes, shall. But. If we're not upholding.
Is it possible for us to? I agree. Is it possible for us to request a, like a two or three year report on how often this occurs? If it's like, uh, because I newly joined, I don't know if like maybe this is just one of, or is this how they have been conducting? Their business and they've like been not meeting requirements.
I do not have that data. Jenna, in your experience with the many boards that you work with. Can you give an estimation about how often people, um, any? Any party submits information after the pre-hearing? Yeah, so I think I said this last time, Santa Ana's rules are unique and that they do allow for discovery. A lot of, a lot of. Personnel boards, civil service commissions don't allow for discovery. A lot of administrative hearings don't allow, allow for discovery. And so that's a really hard question to ask because you are unique in that you have these discovery provisions, which are, you know. As we are learning, obviously, and make things very complicated. Um, and I, it's.
Shouldn't we take that out, though? If we are alluding or like it's been understood that we're allowing discovery at our point? Which is against the rules per Skelly? Shouldn't that be something that we like close the loop on of like, you cannot do a discovery after the fact because you're not. Like you are blatantly not meeting the employee right to be doing a discovery at this point. It should have been conducted while the employee was there. Prior to the adverse action as part of the investigation. We shouldn't be doing a discovery two hearings later and one adverse action later. That feels like really shady.
So I think that the issue with that would be that this rules are allowing for discovery and the employee also gets to take advantage of discovery. So if they want to request documents. From, you know, they get that information from the city and they can also request documents and things of that nature if they want the information.
They shouldn't have to at that point because it should all have been submitted to them for the, prior to the Skelly hearing. Like if they have to request again for new evidence, like something wrong.
Well, let me, let me just give you one example. Um, so an employee can get a Skelly packet. And a Skelly packet by definition is supposed to be all materials upon which um, the adverse action is based. But sometimes an employee will try to assert a defense that he was not treated fairly like. He was not given the same. Level of discipline for the same. For the same conduct. And so how they will show that is if they can request information from the city. Showing what other, how other employees have been disciplined. That's, that information isn't going to be a part of the Skelly packet. And so that's something that they would be able to request through the discovery procedures. And so something like that wouldn't be part of the Skelly packet.
So they would be rolling on something in the Skelly hearing prior to the employee's like defense being fully investigated? That seems kind of off.
I don't think, um. And not, I don't think that that's, you're, you're understanding me.
Oh, like if they're saying it after the hearing has already concluded, the Skelly hearing?
Yes.
So the Skelly hearing, who, how is it conducted? Is it from the employer?
Yeah, the Skelly hearing, and you know, and a Skelly hearing is a little bit of a misnomer. A Skelly hearing is the opportunity for the employee to address someone. It is usually, it's always, well. I won't say always, but it is someone within the city and that they're allowed to take their, the adverse action to before it becomes final. And give that person their point of view and then that person um, makes a final decision on the adverse action.
Could we still allow for discovery and have it clearly marked, like any discovery file? So that it's clearly separated. I mean, I would assume that if they're, they're making a claim that it wouldn't have been used for. The outcome of the Skelly hearing, but. I mean, if they're finding out new things that lead into that, it should be. As long as everything's identified, I think that would be like the safest way to do it. As long as everything's identified, I think that would be like the safest way to do it. Like maybe we even have just like a, our own document control of like, this is when this has been submitted. Like this entire appeals case, this is who has already reviewed it. And has the employee seen it or not seen it before? Has the employee's lawyer seen it or not seen it before? Has the union seen it or not seen it before? Has HR seen it or not seen it before?
So we could add something, if new materials are provided after the Skelly hearing or after the pre-hearing, these should be clearly marked. And I, I, who has, has been given copies of them or who has been given notice of them?
Yeah. If we also want to like simplify our process. It would also be helpful for us to note whether or not the opposing side has had the possible, or the opportunity to. Appeal it, or is that the right word? Appeal? So basically just so that we're not sitting in the, the case hearing, watching the lawyers go back and forth about. Like, no, this shouldn't have been admitted. Yes, this should be admitted. Like, if we have it, like. Either signed off or we have like our own signature that they've seen it and they've chosen not to appeal it. And like, we already know it. So then like anytime that they're feeling something, like we can already say like. You, you've already had this opportunity. We're going to go ahead and submit it, whatever. Like save our own time.
So what you're saying and what I'm hearing you say, I believe. Is that. This make the evidence more clear. As to documents that have been previously provided. We don't need to admit them into evidence. They will be a standard packet of evidence. That will be admitted where they don't need to be. Witnesses will not be, need to be provided to identify.
No, I didn't say that. Um, because we would still like, I think that our hearings provide a lot of. Like due diligence or de-process for the employees, de-process, sorry. That we wouldn't want to necessarily, it would be nice if they did it during discovery. And that we just had like their verified statements, but like from the cross-examining, but. I mean, that takes a lot of resources for us. I'm fine with either. I mean, it's, it costs how much for like all those employees that are clearly there like. At overtime, multiple times for one case hearing. Like it adds up for the city. And then when they're just going back and forth about whether or not. Evidence should be submitted is kind of like a waste of city resources. And then if we're going to have like employers in there that are like sheriffs or, or not sheriff, like police officer, like high-paid employees. And they're there on overtime, it just like the dollar thing continue to add up. If we can think of a more efficient way. Uh, I would, I'd be for it.
So what I'm hearing you say in essence is that we want a more efficient way to provide the evidence. That's pertinent to the hearing by including it in a prescribed packet?
Something like that.
As to the current practice of the representatives entry.
Like last minute, we're like flipping through the binder, things are misnumbered. It's like very sloppy and like disorganized and it makes for like even the. Person that's recording, I guess, hearing recorder. I'm sure her notes like. Even if you're following along with that, you'll be flipping through the binder. Like just something more organized, yeah. And like simplified and like leaned out so that we're not. Utilizing all of these resources on having everyone stay overtime. Or like in a field hearing.
Okay, I think I have that noted. Is there any other discussion in 2.5.3? Moving on to 3.5.4. There matters. At the pre-hearing, each side will be prepared to discuss the major issues in the case. Provide analysis of where may be grounds for stipulation. Discuss any disputes concerning evidence or discovery. And likewise, provide an estimate of the time believed needed to present the case. At the pre-hearing, the chair will make the determination of whether the matter is ready for the hearing. If the chair determines that the matter is not ready for hearing, for instance, because. Of a pending discovery problem, a date for a subsequent pre-hearing may be set. Or the matter may be set for hearing in lieu of the pending issues. In anticipation that they will be resolved prior to the hearing at the discretion of the chair. If issues pending from the pre-hearing conference are not resolved in a timely manner. The chair may decide to continue the pre-hearing conference or to proceed to hearing. Any discussion in this section? Section.
I know.
Go ahead.
Sorry to speak up for everyone, but I know we wanted to take out the chair and have it as like a. Everyone is there for the evidence and deciding since what evidence is submitted and admitted or admitted. Is like a huge deal for how a case will turn.
So we want to replace chair with the board. Will make a determination. So we're talking in the previous section, we said that. A majority of the board should be present at the pre-hearing. So we're saying here that, that not just the chair at the pre-hearing, but the majority of the board would make the determination.
Uh, I can't remember what we all wanted. Like together. Is it possible to just like put a note of like how we want to change that and we'll discuss it in the next rule meeting?
Well, I think at last time we were open to having as many people there as possible. But no less than the chair and the co-chair.
Yeah, that is right.
Okay.
Is that, okay, at the last meeting, we discussed, we said the majority, we would have a majority present. Right here in 2.5 in the pre-hearing conference, a majority of the board. Would be present. So we could not hold a pre-hearing conference unless a majority of the board was present. And in this section, do we want to continue with that or allow the chair to make the decision? Or do we want it to be? The majority of the board or would it be a quorum of those present? So let's say that a majority of the board was required to be at the pre-hearing. That would be four members. And then would we require a quorum of those present? So like two? Would make the determination or would it be the chair? Or, or, you know, we could go a lot of ways here. So I'm asking, what do you guys, what are you trying to get at?
Well, I think it brings us back initially when all of us started on the board. That there wasn't a good explanation of what the chair's duties were. And when it was presented, it was very vague. And it didn't go into detail until later when we found out it was like determining witness list, discovery. It, so it was, the chair was going to be making a lot of decisions. And so if we're, I think that that just needs to be introduced. At the beginning of the year when there's a new board members joining.
Okay. So do you want to add in some place to the rules of what kind of training board member should receive?
That would be helpful.
Okay.
I think, so it currently, didn't it state somewhere that we were supposed to have? The chair and the vice chair present for pre-hearing?
It, it currently states in the current rules that both the chair and the vice chair should be present at the pre-hearing. But it also currently states.
Okay.
One who makes the determination.
I mean, I would be happy with. As many people as possible or like as many board members. That are there at the pre-hearing and then like as long as there's a majority, so. I wouldn't want it to cause, like, to cause any delays though in the appeal hearings. So maybe we just say majority of however, however many are present. And available, or I don't know.
Jenna, Lori, do we have to have quorum at the pre-hearing? So it can just be as many board members that can attend?
It, it's up to you guys to decide. But at our last meeting, when we reviewed the rules in 2.5, we identified that we wanted a majority of the board. We can go back and change that. It previously stated that it was chair and vice chair in the pre-hearing. And then. And then we discussed a majority of the board would be present at the, at the. Pre-hearing conference. So that would mean that we would have to have four people present, or but four board members present to be able to run the pre-hearing. And then what we're saying now in three points, whatever section I'm in. Uh, 2.5.4. At the pre-hearing, who's going to just, who's going to make the determination? Previously, it was the chair, even though the vice chair was also present. Do we want to keep it as the chair? Do we want something else? Is it majority of those present?
From my recollection, I believe we had this guy that we want a majority.
Okay, majority of those that are present.
That makes sense. So if it is only four members, it's not like the quorum has to vote.
So we would need, well, to, on the determination. Of whether the matter is ready for hearing. Is that right Jenna? So we would need, if four were present, we would need at least three?
So I think if we are going to require. A majority of those present, it would need to be a notice meeting and that we would need a quorum. Which obviously that would be fine because we would have that. And so, yeah, you guys, I think that's perfectly fine to say a majority of those present here.
Is that how we would state it at the pre-hearing? The majority of those present will, majority of board members present? Will make the determination of whether the matter is ready for hearing?
You, you said requirement would be two people minimum?
No, we would need four people. We would need four board members present. And then.
Can we say like in case it?
When we vote for the determiner, you would need three people.
Like say there are four people there. If we say majority, would that mean three of the four?
That is.
If it's two versus, so if it's two versus two, two yeses and two no's. Then what happens? Do we say that it?
Question. This is a really good question. This is something that actually has come up. In discussions, if two people, so let's say that only two people. So let's say we're at the pre-hearing. We request that there's a majority of the board present. Okay, so four people show up to make, and they need to make. A determination if the matter is ready for a hearing. And only two of those four members say, yes, it's ready. So then we don't have a quorum. And it can't die because every employee is the right to an appeal. So then what happens? Do we just keep rescheduling it until we get enough people to vote that it's ready for a hearing? And so when we get into majority votes and forums and things like this, we get into some problematic areas because what if we can't get enough people to vote yes? To move the matter forward? I mean, does that, does that die? Does it kill? And then the employee doesn't get a hearing? And how did that work?
So maybe we default to how it is currently if it's tied. So like the. I don't know though. Maybe that's not a good idea.
It seems like from our discussions last time, that the purpose of having people present at the pre-hearing conference was to hear the matters that were discussed. But in order to prevent these problems, um, you know, maybe you leave it as the chair because. They're just, people will, everyone will still be present per the rules. But the chair is just deciding, okay, this is ready for hearing or no, we're going to give the parties a little bit more time and come back for another pre-hearing conference. And then we can set it at a later time depending on where we are in discovery. Just a thought. I, I, I share concerns that I think Lori is expressing as well is that we don't want to delay these things. And I think that this language can tend to delay the hearings unintentionally, of course.
Yeah.
This is a procedural thing. This is not deciding whether or not an appeal is going to happen. Because. We're just deciding, is it ready right now or do they need more time? Is that right?
Yeah, it's, um, it's deciding, you know, like it says in the previous paragraph, I think it's just there's an, if there's a discovery dispute. For example, if one party is saying that the, if the appellate is saying that the city did not give them requested evidence. And I think the rules go on to say that there are motions that the, the parties can even file. So maybe we have a pending motion and maybe. We have to figure out that motion before. We decide to go forward with the hearing. And so again, I think you're just deciding whether the, the. Case is ready to go forward or not. But, but the board member, other board members would still be present.
So then you're saying that the chair wouldn't decide or agree to the witness list and discovery? And any of those? Because there's another section that does clarify that the chair can make those decisions about. Like waving certain people like witness list.
Do you know where that section is, Lori? I'm not sure about that one. But that's a good point, we need to make sure it's consistent. So if I'm incorrect, we need to make sure.
Let me see. So if there's, i- i- in the previous section, 2.5.2, it talks about disputes at the pre-hearing, discovery, pre-hearing discovery disputes will be determined by a majority, we said the majority of the board as opposed to the chair and vice chair. Um, in consultation with the legal advisor, so that, so the pre-hearing disputes is something that we're considering changing, who's gonna make that decision? So I think that's the only thing in the rules. That's the only other thing in the rules, if the disputes that they're having, and then if they're ready or not.
If there is a, there was a description, I don't know if it was outside of the rules, in the, in the binder, in the training binder? There was a speci- more of a specific definition of what the chair's roles would be. I mean, it was some, that's where we later found it.
Was that in the training?
It's in the binder that was provided to us, that explained, it's the rules and just our responsibilities.
Lily, do you know what she's talking about? Is that in the training binder, or is it like the, that board, that thick packet on training? Yeah, so that was part of the training. Yeah, that was included in your training, not necessarily in the rules. So I, I had a discussion about, about this change. I had a discussion about this change, pre-hearing discovery disputes will be determined by a majority of the board in consultation with the legal advisor. Um, I, I, I think this is gonna be really problematic. Hold on. In just trying to just, what if there, what if we don't have a forum, how are we gonna move things forward? If we don't, I mean, we have to have a forum to hold the meeting, so it's gonna be, have to be agendized, and have a forum to hold the meeting. And let's say four people show up, what if two people don't vote for it? How is a decision gonna be made? If there's a dispute in the discovery? If we can't get i- i- it's a little bit different when, when a chair, or a chair and a vice chair make a decision, as opposed to trying to get consensus among a, a group. I'm just looking for some notes, and I, I had a discussion about this very issue. So we have to, yeah, so I guess it would, just a majority of those, we'd have to clarify, is it a majority of the board, or a majority of those present? I would imagine it would be a majority of those present who could vote, so then it would be three people, if only four showed up. Otherwise
Maybe, so like, if they can't get a consensus on that day, there is a majority, unless someone was to like not vote, like there should be seven people. So, I mean, maybe you go back and request that the lawyers provide like clarification for the people who are against or supportive submitting it, and if not, then it gets put on, like, for the next pre-hearing.
So we'd be scheduling multiple pre-hearings?
I mean, only in the, the special, like, unique situation where it's there isn't an agreement across the board. I don't think that that would happen, cause I think most, most of the times, then we default to like getting um, input from the legal counsel, and I think that with that clarification, we would kind of have like a like clarity on, on how we should rule. Sort of like how, yeah, how we should rule, um.
So I think we need to be very careful in how this is worded, cause right now it says, pre-hearing discovery disputes will be determined by the majority of the board. So then, does that
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, Lori, that if we go with the majority of the, those present, because then if you show up for it, then it's the majority of people who are showing up.
Because there, we could be in a situation in which we wouldn't have enough votes to move forward, we have to reschedule the pre-hearing, and the whole point is to move this along quickly.
I guess, in that case, maybe I'm trying to think of like if it was a brand new team of board members.
And if you have one person abstaining, four people show up, then it's dead, we have to reschedule and continue, keep trying. Okay, so it matches.
To, in the sake of keeping the case moving, it sounds like the majority of those present would be like the most reasonable.
Yeah.
Oh, like instead of saying like, if it's two versus two, like in that case, there wouldn't be a majority, majority vote? Is that what you mean? So like you would need three if four people are present?
If there are four people present, we would need three to vote, to move it forward.
Okay, and then if there are three people, you would need two, and then if two, you would need two.
Right, no, we would have to reschedule the pre-hearing, cause we would need a quorum, we would need a majority of the board members present to have a quorum.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Need a mi- minimum of four present, and then three would have to move it forward.
Hey Lori, why don't we put a little note on this, that just says, you know, so we don't forget that we had this discussion, and that we, you know, the, the concerns that we have with um, you know, delay and stuff, and so just so, when we come back and revisit this, if we have any new ideas on how to solve this, that might, you know, just to remind us. Um, I'll also make a comment too, is that, um, the, the pre-hearing, at least for the current matter, were scheduled during the middle of the day, um. And so, you know, obviously that makes it more difficult when, if we were going to require a quorum, um, and we would require people to show up in the middle of the day, so that's just another comment as well.
Is there any other discussion on this section? Or point, 2.5.4? Moving to section three, the hearing, 3.1, briefs. Hearing briefs capsulizing each side's position may be filed with the board secretary, not later than five days prior to the scheduled hearing. Likewise, any evidentiary briefs or motions in, not sure what that's supposed to be, shall also be filed with the board secretary at least five days prior to the hearing, just as a PDF version.
No, that's correct, it's, it's the, in Lemonade. It's correct.
It's spelled correctly? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was misspelled, okay. Any discussion on 3.1, briefs? 3.11, captions, documents filed with the personnel board should be captioned as documents before administrative bodies, such as before the personnel board of the city of Santa Ana, in the matter of the request of blank employee board number, and it gives the year dash the number of the case for that year, hearing brief of employee appellate for review of, and then whether suspension, demotion, or dismissal. All documents filed with the board shall also contain the name, address, telephone, fax, and email of the employee or his or her representative in the upper left-hand corner of the first page of the document.
Um, I just wanted to add that this section with the briefs, how often are they usually submitted within the timeframe that's mentioned?
I have, I don't know, um, we've only had one case in the past two years that employees have been here. Um, Jenna, I don't know if you had, uh, experience elsewhere?
I, again, I, um, a lot of places, I've never actually seen any pre-hearing briefs, um, in rules, and a motion in Lemonade is an evidentiary motion, which you would file saying that asking to exclude, um, certain evidence. And again, I think that goes with the, um, extensive rules that the city has, uh, so I have, I have not seen specific rules uh, specific to emotion in Lemonade. But five days before the hearing, I mean, it does seem reasonable, um, that's, you know, it's not too long, and I think that that is reasonable amount of time, that's just my opinion, though.
3.1.2, service of process, service of all papers except subpoenas may be done by A personnel, personal service, B fax simile, C email. Service is complete upon personal delivery, faxing, or email, the service rules set forth in section 1013 of California's Code of Civil Procedure shall not apply with respect to the expansion of the time allowed for service. Subpoenas shall be served in accordance with the provisions of Code of Civil Procedure Sections 1987 and 1988. Where a party is represented
Can we put it, um, all right, going back to the first paragraph with the, um, subsection, can we put a table there?
Where we have the three, both, the three numbers personnel, A, B, and C?
Yeah. And then we also have an option for email, correct?
Yeah.
For a person? And then, and then do we have like, um, is there any requirements for us, like for ADA, like, so that it's accessible?
None that I know of, for the state of California or the city of Santa Ana.
Maybe we could put a note to just have, uh, like our, the legal team review, or or just like to review it, and make sure that we're not missing any submission options that we need to be but also a table, just to make it easier.
Oh, I'm sorry, so we want legal, we want somebody to review this to see if it, if we need it to be ADA compliant, the document? Is, is that what
Well, also the document, but I meant for, like specifically for how to submit it. So like, I just want to make sure that there isn't like a new way, or something that we're supposed to be allowing for appeals, that we're not currently allowing. Like if we need an interpreter, I, I don't know.
Where a party is represented by an attorney, service shall be made upon the attorney if possible, and a declaration of service executed under penalty of perjury by a person over the age of 18, and who is not a party to the proceeding, should be attached as a proof of service to each document filed with the board, where service upon the other party is required. Any other comments in this section? 3.2, role of the board. Hearings before the personnel board are adjudicatory in nature, because the submission of differing factual interpretations and conclusions on a multiplicity of issues requires the board to apply its discretion and judgment to reach a determination. This adjudicatory process is performed by the members of the board in attendance at the hearing, which requires that a majority of the same board members hear and deliberate on all of the same issues. The members are citizens of the city, and sit as the triers of fact and law, hearing the evidence and arguments, and then entering their independent judgment on the disputed issues as presented during the hearing. Generally, the determination is whether to sustain or overrule the adverse action taken against the employee, and if sustained, whether the disciplinary remedy determined by the appointing authority is appropriate or not. If not, the board may then determine what it believes to be the appropriate remedy. Hearings are controlled by the procedures set forth in codes, code sections nine dash nine and nine dash 10. Hearings are informal with the rules of evidence generally applicable, code section nine dash one eighteen E, but not strictly applied. The chair presides over the hearing, code section nine dash nine, and makes all determinations as to relevance and to the admissibility of evidence with the assistance of the legal advisor, if the chair so requests. The chair may elect to have certain evidentiary or procedural issues heard and resolved by the entire board when a broader mix of opinion may be desired. These determinations are left to the sole discretion of the chair. The chair may also, from time to time, request briefing of an issue from the parties or from the legal advisor.
This is the section I was talking about.
Okay.
Cause this is very specific to the, the role of a chair.
Not during the pre-hearing, so this is during the hearing. I just want to point that out. Not during the pre-hearing. So this is during the hearing. I just want to point that out.
So this is, that we have, there must have been another section that detailed it more.
So what we were previously discussing where we changed to a majority of the board, that was the pre-hearing. Now we're talking about being in the hearing.
Yes, I understand that.
I just want to point that out. Okay. Do you have a recommended change?
Well, I think with the, these determinations are left to the sole discretion of the chair. I think what we've been practicing is everyone consulting, if necessary, we step out and then we come back.
Yeah, it says the chair may like to have certain evidentiary procedural issues heard and resolved by the entire board. And that has been a practice, as you mentioned.
I'm, I'm just more worried about the following sentence. These determinations are left to the sole discretion of the chair. So if, if the chair were to choose not to do that, then they can not do it. For future cases.
I mean, without speaking too much to the closed hearings that we've had, there have been times where I've disagreed with the decision made by the chair.
And, and I think this is what we've been bringing up is that there's practice versus like following the rules and procedures. And so this is a practice that we're having now and doesn't necessarily mean it's going to continue unless it's documented.
So I have very serious concerns about changing this to requiring additional votes or additional decision makers, only because you can imagine that how long that would take if, if every time there was an objection, the chair had to consult with someone else. And I believe that's why the rule is written how it is. They, so.
Well, I mean, if we had better documentation so that it was stated that there has been ample time to, what is it called? To like reject or like to appeal that, the piece of evidence? Like shouldn't it, maybe we could like document it so that like we know that this is then like on the spot deciding so like try and reject something versus this is their first time seeing the piece of evidence and like this is their very first opportunity to try to appeal it.
Yeah, I mean, think about in the hearings, I mean, all the times that the chair has to approve or deny a motion. I mean, it would be incredible amount of time if we put it to a vote for every single one of those things. I'm also seeing in this portion of the rules how it's very clearly stating, this is where it's found in the code. I'm looking up the code right now to see exactly what it does say because we cannot step outside of the code.
Shouldn't, should the code, the codes be attached to these then? Because I, this, I think we had, when we had some meetings, when we first started, there were some suggestions that we had made, like one, including some of these documents that we requested from staff members and then also a timeline with all the different, like timeframes when documents are submitted. If we can get those and that way we can reference.
Are you talking about inserting that into the rules, the timeline? Is that what you're talking about?
The timelines, if it's possible. Because this, you know, so the timelines, like throughout the hearing, this is what's recommended. And I think in this section, it talks about is, these timelines are not strict, but it's like a guidance. So we could see like, okay, brief is, I mean, you submit it within five days. You know, evidence has, and discovery has to be submitted with this many days of the pre-conference.
I thought we were talking of, you wanted, I thought previously mentioned that you wanted to insert a timeline into the rules of how long it takes to change the rules.
That, that as well. Because if we're, if we're, because we're having these meetings and if it wasn't for like us taking notes and being able to recall this information, then there's no follow-up. Because some of these meetings took place in December or January. So how do we come back to see if those things were completed that align with like these rules? And make it easier to understand like the rules and procedures and follow them.
Well, we're, you guys are going to vote on the, the rules of whether or not we're going to insert changes to the rules.
Right. There was also things that were requested in other meetings that we were supposed to have follow-up on and they weren't included in the minutes. And if it wasn't for us taking notes and bringing it up, they would have been forgotten about.
Maybe we should add an action items here, like time period in our comment section to our meetings so that we know. Okay. Well, they did it in the last one, which was super helpful. So maybe we could just continue to do that. Like at the end of every meeting, we make sure to like restate all the action items that are open.
Yeah, we've started doing that in our, in the past meeting.
And then would you want that in the role and procedure? I think, I'm almost thinking like, we have our roles and procedures and then we almost have like a guideline where like, if you don't follow it, you don't have to, but it's like best practice, like an added thing that we keep for ourselves. And like, one of the things we include in there is like, if the evidence is like submitted like way last minute unless it's like, you know, really going to make a difference in the case, like that we would not admit it because it doesn't really follow the rules. But like, we still give the opportunity and then like the other things like it's best practice to, for the chair on like things that could be like a big issue to pull everyone together and like a lot of discussion. And then also like at the end of meetings, we have action items and we make sure that everyone agrees to the notes so that they're easily passed through the next meeting. I don't know if that's too much work or maybe we can just start compiling it and like we just say, let's put this in our guidelines. And then every single meeting, we just have that and then we can pass it on to the next group of board members so that they know how like, this is how we saw that was the most like simplified and like helped us run more smoothly.
We can certainly create some guidelines.
Yeah, as long as, so what I learned in like working in medical device, like if you make it a role or procedure and then you don't follow it, now you're not following your roles and procedures. So you don't necessarily need to do something that is just a helpful tip. Like, you know, it helped us to do action items. That would be more like a, like a user guide that we have and then we pass it on and it's never like submitted through Doc Control or anything like that, or like submitted through whatever portal we put our documents through. We just like have it as an extra appendix for us.
Right. So going back to 3.2, the role of the board. Are there any recommended changes to these? So going back to the timeline of how to change the rules, I have not inserted that into the rules because I do not see a place in which we discuss how to change the rules. So if you have a recommendation of where to put that in, also, I don't know what that timeline would be and what exactly, we're still investigating the exact steps as to how, who needs to authorize a change in the Personnel Board rules and how that needs to be authorized. So we certainly are going to have a staff review. We're certainly going to have a city attorney's office review. And I don't know.
Usually how you would do it is you would have an appendix with like a process map. So you would say like, step one, this is where we're at. And you would have them labeled so that as, like throughout the procedure, you could reference it. And then it gives like a visual.
So I just wanted.
Some people even like put it into the document. So like, they'll say like, now we're on chapter one. And like, that would be like the cleanest way. That would be the way I prefer, but it probably takes most time is to have each section that goes in sequential order discuss each of those sections. Like here's the section where we talk about unions and then we put all of our rules about unions or like making sure that unions are like met with in that section.
I'm not entirely sure that we need to meet and confer with this over the, with the unions. I'm not entirely sure that that's the case, that this is something that we need to confer with them. We're investigating that to see if it is or not. The Personnel Board is a standalone board. And so.
Maybe that's for later than like the second or third revision of this document since we really don't know how it goes. Maybe we could just put it at the end. And as like the future theme is that it's like really built into it so that you're following the process and moving more particularly, I guess.
I would also just be careful. This is a rule document and I would be careful about putting too much guidance into it as opposed to rules since this is, you know, like how we're going to conduct ourselves. If it's something that's guidance, I would just be careful about putting too many things into it to make it, first of all, burdensome. And second of all, the way that future boards may carry it out might be slightly different, but you know, is it a rule or is it guiding?
Yeah.
I would just be, you know, be careful of that and then also be careful stepping outside the code.
Right. So the code is one thing. The, the other thing is that these rules are not followed. And this is why we're having this discussion. Is that in the hearings, these rules are not followed. So saying that we should stick to the rules, these are more guidelines.
I agree. We should be following the rules to the letter. We should be absolutely following the rules. So we should be doing that.
Right. So, but if, but if the participants in these hearings are following that and there's no consequence to not following them, then they become just guidelines.
Well, so I think the issue is like, we didn't realize how much like, like contrast there was between the rules and what's going on. So what was supposed to be like a document update ended up being an audit with the document update ongoing. But like, it should be that they're, they should have been doing everything per the rules and regulations, but they're not. And then, I mean, that's it.
And, and it is three minutes before eight o'clock, so I'm going to stop here.
Yeah. And I just wanted to clarify, Lori, I was saying that you should have the timeline done by today. I'm saying that there was meetings beforehand where we had identified some things that we needed to have better understanding of our roles and how this process plays out. But we haven't checked back on those things that we decided. And I, and I do have a list of those things.
Okay, great.
So we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. This concludes the business calendar. Do we have any comments by the board members?
I have a comment. I just want to. Commissioner. So welcome to the commission. Thank you.
Also, to add a second comment, can we make sure to try and reach out to Denise and see if she's okay?
Any other comments by the board members? Any comments by staff? I have one comment that I'd like to make, or a comment I'd like to make is, I have two members who have not completed the the scheduling document. I don't know if I can share this. Please go into the scheduling document and complete that if you have not done. So I have two members who have not done that and I will resend the link. And if you could do that, I would appreciate that. And we can get the final hearing date and some more rules review dates on this calendar because we currently do not have any more rules review dates on the calendar. We need to, we wanted to try and finish this up by mid-March. Any other staff member comments? Our next meeting will be next Monday. It will be a hearing. Next Monday will be in-person hearing and that will be that will be in the Ross Annex on the first floor conference room. The council chambers will be used by planning commission. So we will be on the first floor. It is a very large room. We'll be socially distanced in that room. I will adjourn the meeting at 8:02. Meeting is adjourned at 8:02 PM. Thank you so much. Please stop the recording and have a good evening.